I had the feeling that I could use that day. Every now and then I get a hair and I go down to San Diego. I start taking off. I heard the people do that.
For QD, you know, it's like, it's like, uh...
June 6th, first 10:00. Seven o'clock.
I had the feeling that I could use that day. Every now and then I get a hair and I go down to San Diego. I start taking off. I heard the people do that.
For QD, you know, it's like, it's like, uh...
June 6th.
Rich cop 1193 East Big Canyon.
I don't know.
All right, should I go ahead and start or would that be all right?
Well, like I said.
I'll go ahead and start and if it runs for a minute or so, it's okay.
We need, um, we need, um, we need, um, we need to... And I sent her a letter. Yeah, what was there?
The plans are in the two large well. That was it.
I know, we can't, you want to take the big plan. Well, we need, we need a compromise. We'll flatten out.
That's usually, that's usually, yeah.
Okay, well, I, okay, then we'll just have our, our...
And yesterday afternoon, I got back from taking them here. I looked at, like, keep holding that after you're pulling in here. Trust me. It's June 6th. First 10:00. Pop off our miles. I didn't know if there was religion too, it's like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I have to do it. Oh, no, I told him. What you got to do is set up that yard.
Yeah.
And I guess maybe she didn't want to rock. Something about it.
Should that be, should that be...
So, that was a much... Yeah. No, I didn't... It would get better with people. You know, when you would have created a draft.
I'd like to call the planning commission meeting to order place, uh, on Wednesday, March 8th, 2019.
May 8th.
May 8th. Excuse me. Could you stand say the question, please? My pleasure.
United States of America, and a true republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. I'd like to draw a call.
Forrest, you here?
Lynn Jordan, you here? Janet Brown is here.
Lee Braylon is here.
Okay, we're here today to meet, talk about, uh, have public hearing on the high, uh, for amendments of 10 dash 28 dash 240, limitations of height, size, and location of garages and other accessory buildings to residential zones. I make a motion that we, okay, that we will open up the public hearing for that and also excuse Cynthia Browning.
Sorry.
Bye.
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 Do we have any concerns or...
Rich cop 1193 East Big Canyon, uh, seat point subdivision. I, I would like that regardless of where the accessory building or garage may be, that they blend into the home state unless you're agricultural. Uh, I understand that maybe some spots you're not going to see them, which is great. I mean, I think that's optimum, but if you are going to see them, I don't think it's a problem. They could match the house or the backdrop myself, but I think that...
No, that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Right. I know in bigger parcels though, they were kind of leaning towards, you can put it wherever you want, but I don't know if I necessarily agree with that.
I think if it's attached, it should match the house.
But even detached, I don't think there should be a big metal building that's just, uh, stark metal. I think it should at least match the backdrop.
Right.
Richard Fisher, 1241, desert drive. Um, I actually don't agree with that. For instance, Mr. Mayor here, got a beautiful metal barn that doesn't match his house. It's a barn, it's not part of his house.
He's on that land.
He's on that land, so we can add that barn.
But that's the point, that's the same point though, is what I'm trying to meet. That what, there's nothing wrong with putting a metal barn on your property that's not touched your house. If it's touched your house, you need to make it match your house.
Well, that unless it's...
But if it's not...
If you have less than five acres, it must be match your house.
That's what this says. Less than five acres.
Less than five acres.
Less than five acres, you have to match. Greater than five acres, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, it's a lot and, and...
Well, what happens if you are on five acres and you have one of those buildings and then that person decides to split that five acres to two and a half acres? Then you have a metal building on less than five acres.
Who wouldn't split that lot?
How do you know?
They have to go before the planning commission or anything.
Yes, they would. You have to go before it.
And what if they take it in court?
Yeah, that's, she has a battle for it.
Paul, every time.
Paul, every time, yeah.
You're using the word match. Now, that's a broad term.
Blend, blend is the word.
Because, you know, if I, if I'm going to put an outbuilding for my tools or something like that on my property somewhere, I'm not, I'm cutting it.
It's not going to match your, I hope it's going to be...
It's going to be pink and, and a warehouse. Relish, that's what I...
Be green.
Anyway, so, I mean, if I get, for example, if I wanted to put something like that and painted it to match the brown trim, that would match.
Yeah.
It'd not match the wood, so maybe we'll change that.
Well, in, in your case, you're the reason that we're going to have a color palette in this town.
No, we're not. We are not a subdivision. You can leave that a subdivision. We are not doing that. Absolutely not. We will hold you off.
Well, there are subdivisions, there are subdivisions here, so that you should have a matching, you know, you should have a palette. Like in Trotta, like the guy who stuff dude in Trotta, that's all going to be matching across the highway. Yes.
And over there, they're not going to have any RV garages.
I don't know what they're going to do.
No roof.
I, I asked for, I asked them.
Well, that'll be...
They're, they're, they're not allowing any RVs over there.
That's, that's if they have a CCNR and they take RVs.
Hey, well, Rich, you're not talking, you know, um, so he, he said that they weren't going to allow any kind of RVs and they, and they have, you know, have acre, quarter acres, third acres, five acres, so...
But it's very managed, if you manage in Trotta, it's very managed, uh, HMR. They take care of the grounds, they water, they do everything. The lot taking people, I don't really use the house. And, uh, the owners take care of everything else, so that it's appealing to, to everybody.
I'm trying to understand how, what does that do with this ordinance too?
Well, because they're part of the town.
No, what I'm getting at is, um, how does that, a good or bad to the ordinance? I, I didn't quite understand that correlation.
Well, because you guys want to make bigger garages and stuff, and so I'm just saying that, you know, they're not going to have it over there.
That's a choice they have, but in other words, they have a choice that they can and they want, but they don't have to. I mean, this isn't telling everybody they have to have big garages. All it says is that they can have a bigger garage if they want to have one, and so if Jeffson Canyon decided not to have them, I, I don't see a problem.
What we're talking about here is for the whole town.
I know that.
We're not talking about for individual subdivisions. If somebody wants to live in a subdivision with CCNRs and HOAs and pay a fee and deal with all these color codes, go move into a subdivision that has it.
That'll be Jeffson.
That's not this town.
And that'll be Jeffson Canyon.
This is for the town, but we need to speak about the town, not for a subdivision.
Well, I, I suggest back on matching, the suggested, uh, change here says must be built of the same material, texture, and color. That sounds like a maniac.
I think that's what we're doing.
I don't know. I, well, I think it is, but...
I would like to make a comment as a public citizen, so I'm going to remove myself from here. I actually have a problem with this as well. Um, I think that to require all accessory buildings greater than 200 square feet on less than five acres be built of the same material, texture, and color as the same primary residence is too restrictive for me. My home was built over 10 years ago. In order for me to meet this criteria to build a, a building, excuse me, I think it's going to be difficult for me to find the exact same material, the exact same texture, and the exact same color as my primary structure. I think that's too restrictive.
Absolutely.
Color, I can help you with it. I can match it. I used to do that.
Yes, Rich cop 1193 East Big Canyon. I think that is too restrictive too, but I don't think it's too restrictive, same color. Color should blend with the house or the backdrop. I don't think that's too restrictive myself.
Blend is a better word.
Yes, it is.
Blend is a better word.
Cause I, I did an outbuilding, uh, for my folks and it matches my house, but it's got wood on it instead of vinyl, but I still have a green metal roof on it. And, you know, you can't, you can't even see it. So it can be done, I know, without a lot of cost, because we did it without a lot of cost.
The, the section right before this, I guess it would be 1040 to 230 at this point, also addresses this same blending question. Uh, I guess what I'm getting at is we should get them coordinated where they say about the same thing or get rid of one of them. You want people to have two and you take one thing. So we might want to look at that, but I didn't bring it, but it's in there. I don't think it was.
The, the 1028 to 230, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, if you got it handy.
Um...
I think it is. It's really, um, fairly long.
I do have it here, but I don't see where it addresses these specific items. Other, it just said no shipping container, cargo container, shipping crate, box, trailer or something.
I think it's under that, if I recall. And maybe it doesn't matter, maybe they're going to be close enough.
Aren't we talking mainly about new construction?
Well, someone could come in and say they want to build a, a shop, a building, an accessory building, and at that point...
The rules there, they're going to have to follow them.
If, if this rule is in place, then it would be, if they're, I, you know, in the spirit of what we're trying to say here is if your house is stucco, the, the building, your building should be stucco. I don't know that the, the exact color match has to be there as much as blend. I think that's a better way to put it, but in the case of, uh, Michelle's house, if I'm not mistaken, it has siding on it, and if it was siding, that's similar, that would be okay. You know, I, I wouldn't think that it, you know, so maybe the word match shouldn't say match, it should say similar. Instead of same material, it should say similar material. Maybe we just change that one word and...
Similar, similar in color and style.
But blend, that's close enough.
Yeah, similar material, texture, color now makes it not, you know, where it has to be exactly.
That's what the other section already said.
Well, I can see taking out be built of same material, texture, but color should be constantly the main structure.
I don't think, I don't think texture, texture doesn't mean anything.
Time texture, yeah.
Well, texture, the texture... What if it's a wooded house? There's no texture to it.
What's that?
The word texture doesn't mean anything to me.
Yeah, it does. It, it means, uh, if it's a stucco house, it should be a stucco texture. It, if it's a wood house, it should be a wood texture. That's, that's the spirit of what we're trying to say here.
That's more the materials than the texture. I mean, you could have different textures on stucco.
That, that's in here though, says similar materials, color, and texture. And the texture means, you know, that it's similar in, I mean, if you don't like that word, we pull that one word out, but that was...
Well, material, materials is stucco is stucco, I mean, that's the material part, right?
Well, I guess what I was, uh, getting at when some of that language was brought up was that you could have, um, um, metal siding on your building and, and now what you're putting on there is nowhere near the same texture as what you're doing. We're trying to match the house to make it look like it's built all at the same time, even if it's built later.
Yeah.
We're trying to match the buildings is what the feedback I'm getting from the community has been about trying to...
Mismatch.
Yeah, so there, there's less eyesores, you know, and...
Less, less hot pot than were residential with you.
Part of that, if you want to give a little opinion. Like I said at the last meeting, you know, I had gone to Diamond Valley, Winchester Hills, and, um, Damaron Valley, and they do allow metal buildings, you know, like, like little, um, I don't know what you want to call it, workshop buildings. But those buildings are in the backyard. They're not, they're not up in the front, they're in the backyard. So, so if you have your, your house and that building, let's say you have your house or detached garage, and then that building is behind that detached garage or back in there, and they're all on basically one acre lots, and, um, they all have, they do have CCNRs out there, but they don't have some.
Yeah, we, we have setbacks 25 feet from the road, and you can't, you've got to keep your out, your accessory outbuildings in back of your house.
They don't.
You know, it's behind the front setback. It has to be behind.
You can have one behind, behind the setback in front of the house for you this. I'm absolutely opposed to that, that is still...
Yeah, I like, I, I like to use my house as an example, because I have a first story house, and it has a lean-to. Uh, the lean-to was built 10 years after the house was. The house is green, um, green byl, with a metal roof. I've done my outbuilding with, uh, wood paneling and painted it green, just to match my house with green metal roof. I got a 20 by 30, uh, greenhouse behind the house, and a 20 by 18 greenhouse, and then a tough shed. And that's the way I like things, to be hidden behind the house.
Well, not everybody's like you, Janet.
The other, the other point is, is there, we have to consider other people, and unfortunately, we don't have a room full of people giving opinions. I just happen to talk to them on the phone here and there, but, um, Marcia Minor would be one of them. I was talking to her, she wants to put a garage. Well, her house is against the cliff.
Yeah.
And she does, there is no backyard. The backyard's straight up.
Yeah, yeah.
But she wants to put a garage in, so there's...
Side yard.
Side yard, that's how we're going to have to do is...
Yeah, but that's my point, is it's still in front of the house though.
And you, and boner, we have to do all that for them.
But that's, uh, my point though is it's still in the front of the house, and so that's why we came up with this language, that it can't be in a 25 foot area in a front setback, because, and there's, like even Forrest, he sells his house, somebody wants to add a shop building or anything else, there's nowhere to go in the backyard, because it's straight down. His is, you know, just 75 feet or so off the cliff, and there's not a backyard for a, a building.
Oh, yeah, there is. Plenty, plenty of room for my...
Anyway, my point is, there's a lot of people on the cliffs, or they're against the cliff, one or the other. There's a lot of people in that situation, and now you can't do anything with any of those properties, because they can't put something that matches their house in the front? It just doesn't seem, and that's where the matching comes in. If they're building something that matches the house as far as color, texture, style, whatever, it just seems unreasonable.
You said she's adding a garage, is it attached or detached?
Probably, I would assume to be detached, but, uh, so...
Does this also mean...
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to add, um, she mentioned like a greenhouse, does that mean greenhouses would not be allowed if they're over 200 square feet?
Well, that's what we've written down here. Well...
Well, I don't, I don't, uh, I, I wouldn't put that in. Uh, to me, that's an ag building, you know, agriculture kind of building, you know, when you have a greenhouse then.
Yeah, because those come in all different types of...
That's family greenhouse.
Well, I was getting at, if you attach something, you, you have a different set of rules than if it's detached, it seems to me, what I've written...
I, I'm not catching that in here, but you can show me where. What I, what I'm getting in this is that you have, um, if you're going to build a detached one, I'm going to use Marcia Minor's example, that, uh, her house, in my opinion, is kind of to the right of her property, so there's really not any place to put it on the right side.
Right.
The house is so far back against it that she might choose to put the garage on the far left side of her property, which you might call a backyard, but because the house is against the, the back, it could be considered in front of the house, or at least forward a little bit.
But in the same, she just attaches it, she's got a different set of rules, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
I'm not catching that in...
Marty, Marty, let me, so in, in other settings that we have to deal with this all the time, okay? We, we put the standard rule of what we want. We don't want in front of any, uh, building that we're going to go, accessory building, garage, whatever, in front of the house, okay? Somebody like Marcia, she comes in and she has a meeting with everybody here, and she asks for what we call a variance, and she presents why she needs a variance, and which is because, hey, I have a mountain on my back door, which, okay, fair enough. You need to change that? We're going to make a variance for your house because of your lot, but we don't have to change the rules for everybody. Let us, case by case.
Well, that's what we did for the boner.
That's what I was going to say, wasn't that exactly what we just did? She was wanting to go on something?
That's what we did for the boner.
But it doesn't, still doesn't work quite that way. They have to, um, you can't, as a, as a, the mayor or the town council, we can't approve those. Those have to go then to the arbitrator that is from Springdale. I can't remember the guy's name. And so now you pay another $350 to have him review it to decide, because they don't want favor to them, where, oh, I said yes here, but I didn't say yes there, so they take it out of my hands, and they, they have to take it someplace else. And that's, so doing those kind of things like that, where we're breaking those kind of rules, I just would rather have the rules that says it's okay to do it. Now, if we're not okay with it, we're not okay with it. Uh, you know, I, I don't really have a dog in spite. I, I just feel bad for some of these people I talk to, that there's a lot of them that are against the cliff, they're all over in Gooseberry to up around, we have a lot of cliffs here. They're either against the cliff, or they're overlooking the cliff. And there's a lot of people that don't have a backyard, and so we're going to act out of those people, because we don't want a building that matches their house in their front yard, that's, that's not in that setback. That just seems too restrictive. And I just think that sometimes when we make some of these rules, we can create this environment in our community where people are just pissed at us because they can't do anything.
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's the feedback I get from people, is they're tired of us telling them they can't do all these things. And I don't think that if, if, um, even in, in Michelle's case, you know, if she wanted to, she's got a lot of background, but, you know, when it comes down to trying to match your house, it's not about matching perfectly the exact same texture and all that, it's just the spirit of it, you know, is there, it has siding and has the trim and has a, you know, as opposed to a steel building, that's all.
This is what I was, just trying to get where you're from.
And, and that's the thing that would probably, and we've got to address this yet, you know, we'll get into another meeting, but it's the conaxes, you know? I mean, people hate those things and they love them. Which one is it?
They hate them.
And they love them, because they keep buying them, and they keep putting them in, even though they're against our wishes right now.
Yes.
And it's just like, it's, they're driving me crazy, but...
They need to paint with the master color of their house.
Even that doesn't make them look less like cars.
It's more less than gone, but it's still cute.
Yes, but still.
Exactly.
Rich cop 1193 East Big Canyon. I think the biggest thing, no matter what the circumstance is, if it matches just the color, or close to the color of the house, whether it's in the front, the back, if it's a connex, it's just more appealing, put it that way, whether it's, like you said, if it's on the side of the house inside, you know, if it has to be, because you've got a cliff, at least if it matches color-wise, at least it kind of blends in and it's not an eyesore. I think that's the main thing in my mind. You know, like you said, you're never going to match exactly the stucco and the, uh, siding or whatever, but if, at least if it's the same color, regardless of what zone you're in, I think it's going to definitely make a big difference, at least it blends in better.
I agree. I think that's easy fix, paint.
Right. I don't think that's over restrictive.
I think we ought to take that acres down to, uh, one, because there's a number of people talking about, plus your five acre little slots in, so it's going to have a lot more five acre things around. Uh, to tell somebody that comes up to buy five, six acres, I mean, that you can't do a building or whatever like that, that somebody wants to put in a barn on five acres, that's a good chunk of ground. They want to put a metal barn in, they need to be allowed to put a metal barn in. It's not like they're having a one acre lot. I'll tell you what, I'll, if, if there was a bunch of people here with five acre parcels, they would be screaming about that.
Exactly, that's my point right now.
Cause they just, when you have that much room, you just...
Right. So, I, I think if we're going to talk about restricting this and going a little bit more of this, I think it needs to go down to the one acre size.
Well, I think it's, uh, we're thinking that it should be, um, similar material and color, period. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Somewhere is that, I'm finding that. Somewhere is that.
Let's strike, uh, be built of same material, texture, atmosphere, keep the color.
Build of similar material and color.
Similar material and color.
Now, could we get Michelle to read that earlier? The, the section right, uh, right, uh, in front of this and see if we're, if we're close to what that says?
You can put it on the screen too, Michelle, if you drag over to the right.
Cause there's no point in having one section say one thing and the next section say something quite different about it. Well, that's why we didn't have to take that.
That's the mark rate in the year.
Accessory buildings, separate agriculture use of accessory buildings shall be, I can read it, tell you what I like.
Similar material and color.
Constructed of similar color, materials and colors, so that's what we're saying.
Architectural style designed to blend. Why would you use that same verbiage?
It's the same, that's the same verbiage.
If we've got that there, why, what...
Why are we adding twice?
Why are we doing this?
Cause we're getting the 100% of the square footage for the garage.
Oh, well, no, we're not talking about the rest of, just this one, this one section.
This is, this is already there.
That's already there.
Similar material and color. The thing is, we're going to enlarge the sizes as it goes.
I understand that, yeah, but we're not talking about changing the rest of it right.
Well, that's one of the things we have to change.
I just think that's, that's part of that material, that says it right.
Yes, sorry.
I get the stand, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I have a question. Sure. So, what, if you have a stucco house, what would you consider similar material? I'm just curious, because I'm thinking about doing a garage, so what's similar material?
Well, if you're going to do something like a slatted wood with, uh, brick, if it was the same color as your house, with the same type of roof or same color as your roof.
I would say it'd be stucco, that'd be my answer.
That'd be my answer.
That would be my answer too, but if you say similar, somebody...
What we mean by similar is, is, is like in the case of Michelle, you can't go down and buy the exact same stuff.
Right, yeah.
And so similar material would be siding.
If she's got wood, she needs wood. Well, you're willing to look like they're wood.
So, so, I just, just so I get this straight, cause I'm kind of confused. You're not the only one. So, this is, this is about either attached or detached garage, and if it's in the front of the yard, it has to be in similar material as your house, correct?
25 feet back from the unsupped back.
25 feet, okay, I mean, but is it in, is it in the front yard or, or is it...
Yeah.
So now...
Cannot be closer to the street than 25 feet.
Well, if it's attached, it, it pretty much has to be the same.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, it could be a detached garage, so...
I, I understand that, that's a big deal.
Let's strike, uh, be built of same material, texture, at, keep the color.
Build of similar material and color.
And color.
Now, could we get Michelle to read that earlier? The, the section right by, or right in, uh, in front of this and see if we're more close to what that says?
You can put it on the screen too, Michelle. If you drag over to the right.
Yeah.
Cause there's no point in having one section say one thing and the next section say something quite different about it. Well, that's why we didn't have to take that. Accessory buildings, separate agricultural use accessory buildings shall be, I can read it.
Similar material and color.
Constructed of similar color, materials and colors. So that's what we're saying.
Architectural style designed to blend. Why would you use that same verbiage?
It's the same, that's the same verbiage.
If we've got that there, why, what?
Why are we adding twice?
Why are we doing this?
Cause we're getting the hundred percent of the square footage.
Oh, well, no, we're not talking about the rest of, just this one.
Just this one.
Section seven.
This is, this is already there.
That's already there.
Similar material and color. The thing is, we're gonna enlarge the sizes.
I understand that, yeah. We're not talking about changing the rest of it right now.
Well, that's one of the things we have to change.
I just think that's, that's part of that material that says it right.
Yes, sorry.
I get the stand. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what, if you have a stucco house, what would you consider similar material? I'm just curious because I'm thinking about doing a garage, so what's similar material?
Well, if you're gonna do something like a slatted wood with, uh, brick, if it was the same color as your house, with the same type of roof or same color as your roof.
I would say it'd be stucco. That'd be my answer.
That'd be my answer.
That'd be my answer too, but if you say similar, somebody.
What we mean by similar is, is, is like in the case of Michelle, you can't go down and buy the exact same stuff.
Right.
And so similar material would be siding.
If she's got wood, she needs wood. While you're willing to look like they're wood.
So, so I just, just so I get this straight, cause I'm kind of confused.
You're not the only one.
So this is, this is about either attached or detached garage. And if it's in the front of the yard, it has to be in similar material as your house. Correct?
Twenty-five feet back from the unsaid.
Yes.
Twenty-five feet, okay. I mean, but it's in, in the front yard or, or is it?
Yeah.
So now.
Cannot be closer to the street than twenty-five feet.
Well, if it's attached, it, it pretty much has to be the same.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, it could be a detached garage, so.
I, I understand that. That's a big deal.
So it's, so like I'm like with Paul and Forrest, that they have, and Martin, that minor lady.
Right.
She has, they, you know, so she decides to build a detached garage in the front of her house and it would have, her, hers, since her house is stucco, it would have to be a stucco garage.
Right. And in the same color as your house.
If she has room to do it.
Okay.
But if you adopt this right here into there, the one thing that I like about this is architecturally, it says the similar. So in a, in a case of, you know, anybody else, then if it's a flat roof, it would be flat roof and, you know, so you could go that extra step and add that verbiage in and it kind of cleans it up a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to add that in so that they both read the same.
So they're not putting a kitchen roof next to a platform.
That'd be true. Same, uh, it's, it's the same.
Roll, roll.
So it looks intentional.
Looks like she's still got another comment.
I, I still have a few. So now, now with accessory buildings, now is, is that the same thing? Is it gonna, do you can have those accessory buildings in the front or how's that?
I'm not talking about accessory buildings. We're talking about garages.
That's what you're doing.
No, like, you know, like.
Yeah, it's accessory building. And accessory building or is a, is a garage or vice versa.
They're like a little shed under two hundred square feet or like a Conex.
A hundred, two hundred square feet at that, I thought, with the foundation, you pull it away.
Yeah, yeah, they wouldn't count those. Like a Conex is already against the code.
Container, you're not allowed.
Rick and I were talking about.
I know, but I'm just saying, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, like, on accessory buildings, now do they have to be in the same material and stuff? Or, or is that, you know, you can have like a top shed painted in the same color or you can have like one of those little metal sheds that, and they can be in the front yard?
You have good questions.
Well, that is.
I got some more. I got written down too.
That is a good point. We, the one word we asked is two hundred square feet and this, the other one we asked is a, a, a square footage. But yeah, an accessory building is by definition detached.
It's detached?
Yeah.
Right. And so you, so.
Another word to attach garage is not accessory building. Does that make sense?
I'm just, just wanna get it straight, cause people ask me questions because they come to me.
Well, if you get it straight, come talk to me, cause I, I'm.
Don't either.
I'm struggling here.
So, so we're keeping it to the two hundred square feet. If somebody wants to buy a top shed, that's not gonna fall, I mean, they're not gonna match a stucco shed to their.
Yeah, but at the same point.
One two hundred square foot shed.
By the same point, do we wanna allow that?
That's, that's what I'm saying. Because, you know, we have one.
In the front yard.
In the front yard. Because you have one right over here, uh, and you know, it's, it's a nice shed, but it's in the front yard. And it doesn't match the house.
No, tough sheds won't. They're, they're.
Well, I know.
You make a point.
We go to tough sheds and think that it's a match.
We, we haven't probably addressed that and I'm not sure if it's a right. Me too, you think, cause it's a different.
Well, it says accessory building in residential phone. So that's why I'm, I'm, is this just on garages or is this on?
No, this is all accessories building. It's anywhere.
Anyways, I have another question on one paper. So, why do you think about that, Marty?
I think you make a really good point on those tough sheds, that maybe those are small enough. If those are two hundred square feet, they should be someplace located outside.
I think so.
I'm okay with that. I just, uh.
They don't have to match as long as you put it behind your house.
Under two hundred square feet.
You can't have it in front of your house.
You know, these tough sheds are probably okay, but they gotta be behind the house.
Well, it used to be, they was two hundred square feet and not electrified. You could go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
And, but then if it was two hundred feet, square feet or over and you have electricity, then you needed to get permission.
Right. Okay, let's say I put a two hundred foot square foot shed. I can't put it in the backyard, cause I don't have.
Oh, you can. You violate.
But, but, let's say at a two hundred square foot or under.
Yeah.
You could certainly build that so that it could match your house.
Yeah.
Or in the backyard. You could, but how many people would?
Depends on how much junk I get. Put it somewhere. But it would, you know, it would match my house if I wanted to do that, you see. But it would be two hundred.
I do.
Debbie cop council. Okay, so someone puts a two hundred square foot tough shed and they put it in the front, they have it matching the house and everything. What if they decide to put a second level on top of it?
On top of it?
A tough shed?
Well, it's not a tough shed. It's, it's a stick built.
She's a bad motorcycle.
What she's talking about, it's a building and it meets some other criteria.
Well, yours is, they found you fifteen feet.
Never, never heard of that concept.
Yeah, it's a pretty ugly building too, but.
Okay, I can look down there.
It's your point.
You gotta look.
Yeah, it is a nice building.
Is it stick built or a tough?
Yeah, stick built.
It's stick built, but we actually had him cut it down and move it, cause it was too close to the other building too.
But there's nothing in our regulations that talk about.
Well, it, it was under the height requirements of buildings and it's two levels and it's not much bigger than a tough shed, only it's two levels high. It's kind of a weird building. But.
It's great, Father.
No, it's not that. It was a new building, but it, it, it met the code based on the way we got it awarded. It's just kind of an eyesore because of.
That's the brown house down there.
Yes, it's over in Cedar Point. I'm not sure. I can't remember the guy's name.
Yeah, we got one down here.
Red State's lane, right across the street from me.
Anyway, um, I, I can see where, uh, if only a tough shed in the front yard is kind of an eyesore and I, you know, it, we could put in something that says it's at least gotta be behind the front line of the house.
Just like greenhouses and things like that.
At least the side yard, if not the backyard.
And paint matched at least.
Well, that's why we used to have it. Now we're, we're saying about the front yard setback area, which.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say is that we could change that for those temporary shed kind of, you know, tough shed style.
But the bigger buildings in the, in that area.
Well, bigger buildings are gonna be made to match. They're gonna be built to match. That's what we're telling they have to do. Now, if they're dropping a tough shed, which is different material, different size, under the square footage, that, that's small enough, we can tuck it back someplace else.
Right.
I'm just saying have a, another line for that possibly with that.
Okay, definitely have somebody just build sideways on their lot and lots of things.
Yeah.
That's a different.
Okay.
It's, that's already done.
I thought we were gonna talk about the watching.
That ship sailed.
Number, I, I, number two, you have, you crossed out the number of garages. And it's a maximum of one garage attached and one detached garage. So if you cross that out, how many garages are we allowed?
Hundred percent of your square footage.
Just, that's, uh, we're using my house as an example. I basically have two garages. And they're both.
There's my limit.
You gotta make enough acreage you put in six, eight, ten of.
One hundred percent of square footage of the primary structure.
Per each.
Not, not per each. You, you can only have a hundred percent of garage space. That's it. Period. It's not per garage. It's, it's a hundred percent. Your garage space can only be a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Is that not?
Then we're off.
No, no. Total garage space can only be a hundred percent.
Of square footage, not footprint.
That, that's the, of, of, of the attached garage, not detached.
Yeah.
Attached.
That's not detached. We're, right now we're looking at detached accessory buildings.
Right.
Well, that's a different space.
Detached says that it can be.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the main building plus detached garage. But it doesn't say that there can only be one detached garage. We've already crossed that off.
You, I don't think we tried to cross that off, but you could add that. The only thing we, the only thing we tried to cross off was for the attached garage, that you could have more than one attached garage, using my house as an example.
The whole thing is struck out. I don't, I don't want to help.
Double check it here.
Maximum one detached garage and one detached garage, all crossed out.
Yeah, the one detached was not meant to be crossed off. It was just a, the.
I would like this thing a lot better if it wasn't crossed out.
No, I don't think it should be crossed out.
So you can only have one detached?
Right. Right. Well, no.
So you can have multiple.
More than one attached, just only one detached. Cause some people will, I've seen them many times, where one garage is facing the road and the other one's facing sideways, you know?
Right.
Where they have two, two separate garages, both attached to the house. So architecturally, we're just trying not to limit people. In my case, we're creating a courtyard with garages.
So instead of two being all crossed out, we have one detached at fifty percent.
I agree with you, of course. We should have one detached.
Marty, what, what if they do one detached garage, like a garage shop, and what if they need to have a barn? That's a second accessory.
Well, that's, that's, that's an accessory building, which is different than a detached garage.
Okay, okay.
We're, there's, the only limit on accessory buildings is, is the square footage of your rear yard. You can have, according to Marty, how many you have back to two garages? Well, no.
I didn't, he'd have three.
Yeah, you can have two, unlimited attached and one detached, which is good. Well, I don't know. But you can still have, you, you can have accessory buildings up to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, this was a kind of oversight when, uh, several of us edited this and I'm not sure where the edit came from on that, but I didn't mean to say you could have more than one detached garage. I'm, I agree with you that we shouldn't have.
We shouldn't have, because if, we're putting them in the front yard, you can all suddenly have three detached garages in the front yard.
And I agree with you. Yeah.
And that's.
Yeah, I totally agree.
There should be one detached. Right?
Right, for us?
Uh, well, I would, I would prefer to leave, I think the way that is maximum one attached and one detached, but I'm probably gonna lose that one.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing the maximum on the attached part.
Cause, well, if it's attached, it's gonna blend with the house anyway.
Yeah.
So when it's attached, it's just gonna look like part of the roof line of everything else, so.
A lot of people put windows in them so they look like it's part of just around the house. You don't even know, cause most time they're on the side.
And one reason I, I would think we need more than one detached garage is because they're allowed a higher, um, roof height.
So, one, one detached garage and then whatever for your accessory building. The accessory building has to be separate from the garage.
Right. And it. So this. And actually, well, I've got another problem.
So, uh.
The only thing we're limiting is the detached garage. We're gonna limit that to one.
Besides?
Should that be limited to less than five acres also?
One detached.
Should be, should be less than one acre. Or one acre or less.
Right.
The guys that buy five acres, they have to have a little bit more leeway, cause that's why they're buying five acres. Right.
I, I like the one detached garage a lot better.
Yeah.
The one detached garage?
Yeah.
One detached. At fifty percent.
Cause I gotta figure out that you could do three or four detached garages and they could all be twenty-five feet tall.
No, no, one, one detached, right?
I agree.
Let's say that one detached garage at fifty percent of the square footage and.
Square, square footage will be, yeah, yeah. That's still a longer one. Yeah.
And that was number two, right?
Yeah.
So we could go, and that's number one.
Okay, so we're gonna unstrike that out and put one, one detached at fifty percent of square footage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're just gonna take out those three words. Because down here it talks about square footage, so we don't need to restate it again.
Say detached, take detached out.
Okay.
So we just take out detached.
Okay, you keeping up with that, Michelle?
I can't hardly hear you guys.
Okay. I'll give you my notes when I. Okay, so we thought one did, we're, the, the, number two that struck out, we're gonna unstrike it. Number of garages, one detached garage would be allowed on each lot in association with primary residence dwelling at fifty percent of square footage.
And let's not say that again, because it says it's a little bit.
That's taking care of that a little.
Yeah. Just with the primary residential dwelling, yeah. So we just take out those three words.
Yeah.
Now, what three would work?
So it says one detached garage and strike in between that.
And leave everything else.
Yeah, and leave everything else.
Leave it just as it is.
Well, I thought we were talking about more than one detached garage.
On the attached yard, on the detached.
We're not limiting.
But, but we just limited it to one detached.
Detached, detached.
No, detached.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong front door.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm hoping onto number three. Okay, sorry. So, so I just wanna get this straight, in case I wanna do this. It says, um, something about, um, maximum accessory building height, no accessory building with the exception of detached garages, including agricultural use building shall be higher than fifteen feet. But what if you wanna build like a, a mayor motel or a barn? And fifteen feet isn't really that high?
It's, it's not for a barn. No way.
No. I'm just, you know.
Twenty-five feet.
Or an RV garage.
That is if it's right. You have a four foot high door, it's not a RV garage. It has to be eight feet, there's no one up detached garage.
Period.
That's gonna be that detached garage. It's forty-five feet tall.
Yeah.
Well, the, what we're, um.
See what I'm saying?
And if somebody's gonna do a detached RV garage, like he just said, most of those doors are either fourteen or sixteen feet tall.
Yeah.
You can't have a roof line of fifteen if you have a fourteen foot tall garage door. So we're gonna fix that.
Well, I thought we'd come to the twenty-five feet.
Let me, let me speak to that for a minute if you don't mind. We should make.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the garage is, we're, we're talking about. So you just call it detached garage?
Can I have a whole of twenty-five feet?
Can we, uh, let me, let me talk to this for just a minute if you don't mind.
That's rebuilding any garage. Just keep going now.
Janet?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so the reason that, uh, the height limit came in was to try to help also limit the size of the structure that would be for, uh, horses. And so keep in mind that we're talking about on probably smaller lots. But it was to try to limit, so, you know, if you take the average running shed or something for a horse, fifteen feet's pretty tall.
Yeah.
And, um, it was to prevent from building a building, you know, that's a metal building like.
Gooseberry.
I have over there that's, you know, twenty-three feet tall or whatever it is. And now you have this massive, you know, building that's metal and because I put horses in it, you end up with a steel building in a one acre subdivision because it's a, a horse barn. And so having that height limit was to help limit how big a building that could possibly be.
So if this is for a one acre, then it shouldn't be a big deal. If that's a five acre parcel, then he, he can have a bigger taller barn area, right?
But that's why they did, cause you could, technically, where it is, it's for horses.
So we're talking one acre.
And so now you have these metal buildings that pop up on these one acre lots that are legal because of they're for animals.
So as long as we make this for one acre or less, then we keep the height restriction on fifteen, like you're talking, right?
You brought it to us.
Well, I know. Hey, it's a, it's a challenge to get all this right.
Maybe, maybe barns and stuff should be in a different section. Just, I don't know. I think, I think they are. That's a good thought. I don't have my book with me.
We, this, this was intended for really, um, these structures that are just shade structures for horses and things like that. It wasn't meant to give someone permission to build a metal building on a one acre lot. It was more about that, you know, you could go down to Schultz and Products and you can buy the lean tubes that for horses is running, they call them running sheds.
Yeah.
Or lean tubes and, uh, and that's, that's why the, the hype was a lot less on that. Right. So, because they were, that type of hay barns and things like that. And that's why it wasn't so high, because we didn't want these massive huge buildings.
So this is for an accessory building, not the detached garage?
For horses. This is, this is not accessory building. This is a, a horse, um, place you had.
So do we want to specify that? That's what I'm saying?
That's what it says. It says agriculture. If I'm not mistaken, that's, that's where it, but. Go ahead with, uh, Marty, you've got something.
It says maximum accessory building height, no accessory building with the exception of detached garages, including agricultural use accessory buildings, shall be higher than fifteen feet.
Including agriculture buildings. Right. So it's.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, cause up above we say it's gotta be no more than twenty-five feet.
But that's for the detached one.
That's excluded from a detached garage. Doesn't exclude.
Detached garage, right.
That's what.
Detached garage is, is an accessory building, but it's just an exception.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Anyway, that, that height came in, I think it was, you know, conversation was frank. I'm not positive, but.
I don't think there's anything wrong with that, once we say it's one acre or less.
That's one reason we were trying to come up with a lower height on that was to limit how big the building might get in some way, but.
I can see.
It could be that we don't wanna have that. It's, you know, totally for you, you guys to decide it.
I can see your garage all the way from the other side of the river.
Are you saying I should do something?
You and Angel, why don't you do both your garages up here in the barns, on the other side of the river?
Well, our clientele loves it in there too.
They got pictures. Okay, so what? Okay, we have any other questions?
On the whole thing?
Suggestions?
On what?
On what we're talking about here. Okay, we're, we're doing a number of detached garages.
Okay, on number six?
Number six that we have here?
Yep.
Okay.
No detached garage or other accessory building shall be located in any required front yard setback area.
Right, twenty first, twenty-five feet from the road.
Well, that's how I kinda read it.
That's a setback.
So that's your setback.
That's a setback. That's, uh, that's a rule we have to go by.
It, it would have to be behind the twenty-five feet and ten feet in front of your primary building.
Unless you're attached to.
It can be attached, but that's.
You can, you can let, cause my house, the barn, there's garages in the front. Right, in fact, that's, that's not what we're talking about.
I know, but it needs to be attached or, but it has to have a setback.
If it's attached, you can go along everything.
Yeah. Something we, you know, we touched on.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying about accessory building, so you're saying that it can be twenty-five feet back in the front yard?
Yeah.
It would have to be.
Your accessory building?
Right.
Yeah, keep in mind that's still built to.
I'm sorry?
So if you got a under two hundred square foot accessory building, it can be in the front then, according to this?
I was just gonna bring that up, but we probably need to address those, those types that are smaller than that. No, accessory buildings are defined as matching the color, texture of the house.
Okay, well, you know, maybe.
So we should have in presence, two hundred square foot or smaller, uh, i.e., you know, tough sheds, portable, needs to go behind. Can't fit in this.
Maybe on number six, you, you need to state that, but it has to match the, the house in, in, in your, in your, in your, um, your code here, so people know that they can't put a little, you know, accessory building and maybe you should put two hundred feet or more, has to match. Two hundred feet can be in the backyard or something, but I think you need to state it, you know, you, you have to state it specifically because people are not, they're gonna read that, oh, I can put this one however I want. So I think you need to really state it. Spell it out, A, B, C.
So you're saying number six should say no detached garage greater than two hundred square feet?
No, not greater. Less than, less, less, no detached accessory building less than two hundred square feet on, in the front part of the house.
We just add a number of.
Just add a line.
Add a line to it.
Cause add a new line in that second.
And I would, I would put that any accessory building over that has to match the, match the house.
We've already got that.
I know, but it just doesn't really.
Well, we don't need to.
My time for working progress.
Okay, well, I would, I would have a vague place of this.
Why you have me confused?
Well, you broke it, that's what you're trying to do.
Well, you're breaking.
You broke it.
Well, she makes a good point, we probably should have a line on there about those tough sheds that they've gotta go on that.
Yeah, we brought the big.
And decided, are they rear setbacks or, uh, you know, side yard setbacks, where, where is it okay? Um, I know that there was one over in your neighborhood and it, and the side yard and everybody's complaining about that even in your neighborhood. And, uh, you know, I just think it's appropriate to have them in the rear yard setback, which means behind the rear, uh, line of the house.
If there is.
Yeah.
If there is, and if there isn't on the side.
And if there isn't, you know.
If there isn't on the side of the house.
If there is, they, they can wear them. Like storage.
Well, what, what, what do you put?
I just, I just.
What do you put, has to be at least fifteen feet from the front of the, the house or getting in the side yard because some people may have a little bit of side yard but no room elsewhere. So it has to be setback fifteen feet from the front house, it can't, it's not really noticeable from the front.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
That way it's not in the front yard at all, but it's in the side, but at least it has to be back starting at fifteen feet from the front.
I'll let you come up with that.
What do you think?
Or even with the rest of the house. I would just like it as far back as you can and I just think most people have room for one of those tiny sheds in their small backyard and, you know. Paul, you could probably squeeze one if you had to. In your house?
Yeah.
You know, even on the cliff, you could.
I've got a garage direct, you can look deep.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, my, in nineteen ninety-eight, or in two thousand eight, our setbacks on riches were set by the old planning commission. By seventy-five feet and nobody.
Seventy-five.
And nobody paid attention to them.
They were fifty.
And so that's why you have.
I was hoping when I, when I built, so.
They were fifty and then we changed those when Miles Mark was considering building up there and we.
No, I talked, I talked to Lori Baum and, uh, Mrs. Pugmeyer and they were both on the planning commission at that time and the setback on homes was seventy-five feet, but the county was giving the building permits and not the town, so people did what they wanted to do. And this is why we're facing this now, it's because of that. And so we need to nail it down.
Let's just keep those tough sheds in the backyard, that's how I feel.
I'd like to see this go back up on, on the document where we can, we can add notes to it.
I second that. Make that a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we put this back on a work document.
Are we gonna close the public hearing first?
Oh.
Don't do that.
Wait, 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 that's not the same, Marty, that's not the same.
Well, uh, number, number four, then you got like one and two, and, okay, so the, the attached garage can be one hundred percent of the living space excluding the attached garage.
Right.
Right.
And then number two, the detached garage, any accessory building, including agricultural use buildings, shall not be greater than fifty percent of the foot, of the square footage of the primary structure, but you're including the garage.
Yes.
Right.
So, so it's.
Here, here's the way to look at it, if you got a three thousand square foot house, a three thousand foot, square foot, three thousand square foot attached garage, now you got six thousand square feet, so you might be detached three thousand square feet, half of the.
Total.
Six thousand.
Total.
Yeah, total.
If, if your rear yard is being that and all that.
Or your side yard.
Or your side yard, then you can do it.
Okay, I, um.
So you can have a lot of garage, that's what we're thinking.
Marty, before I close the public hearing, do you have anything else to say?
I'm, I'm contemplating that, but that's okay, I, I, I can, I can.
This is a good time to read up, if you have a couple more notes, we'll handle it.
I, I know, but I just got.
Because, yeah, they're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna go back to drawing board on this and so.
We're going back to drawing board on this.
You have, it'd be good to know.